Thank you, Hector. So we will call the Talent City Council Regular Meeting of March 5th to order. We'll call please.
Councilor Coley.
Here.
Councilor Prenamoroff.
Here.
Councilor Medina is not present. Councilor Pestizo.
Here.
Councilor Byers.
Here.
Councilor Para Miller.
Here.
And Mayor Ayers Flood.
Here.
Mayor, give a quorum.
Thank you, Hector. Next item on the agenda is additions and corrections to agenda. Are there any additions or corrections, Council Byers?
I'd love to add a quick update about the skate park committee.
Great. Let's see, that is information.
Yes.
So we can put it under. We'll just put it under as item eight point three. Does that sound good?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's unfinished. Unfinished business.
It's kind of unfinished.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you. It's not new business, so. Skate Park. Committee update. Okay. Anything else? Alex?
We'd like to, staff would like to request under new business approval of payment to serve for approximately sixty-eight thousand dollars for work already completed on the response to the fire at historic town hall.
Everybody has the invoice. It's the one in orange, okay? Nine point two. Anything else? All right. Next item on the agenda is community announcement. Staff?
Great. Some upcoming events on March fifteenth, Together for Talent is hosting an emergency disaster, disaster preparedness training at the Talent Library from one to three P M. And your own chief, Jeffers Snook is one of the presenters there. April nineteenth, there's a Bear Creek Stewart's cleanup at Lynn Newberry, starting at nine A M., ending at noon. Sign up is required, and that's at W W dot stream dash smart dot com slash bear dash creek dash clean dash ups. And May third is a household hazardous waste collection event by Recology at the Rogue Transfer Station. That's all day, eight to four thirty P M. recology dot com slash recology dash Ashland. That is May third. And this city notice has been a couple of times, but want to repeat it. I think it's important. Fire mitigation grants are available from Fire District Five. You can receive a two hundred fifty dollar grant and a free defensible space assessment. The information on that is at J C F D, as in Jackson County Fire District Five dot com slash wildfire. And a couple, have a couple of community notices. Jackson County Community Long Term Recovery Group is hosting an accessory dwelling unit workshop. That's been rescheduled from March fifteenth, which was the original planned date, to July twelfth at the Phoenix Civic Center. You can sign up at J C C L T R G dot org slash A D U dash workshop. I will share that workshop is specifically designed for property owners who may be interested in understanding the ins and outs and actually doing, doing, adding that in A D U. And Rogue Food Unites is asked us to share that they are looking for volunteers to assist at Thursday Neighbors Unite Farmers Market in Talent. And for more information, you can visit roguefoodunites dot org slash volunteer dash opportunities. That's it.
Great. And I think Long Term Recovery Group has the A D U guy doing that. Yep. Derek Shero, our own former planning commissioner, and I've taken, I've, I've attended his presentation. It's very good, very good. Thank you, staff. Next item on the agenda, speakers heard on non-agenda items. Hector, do we have any speaker heard on non-agenda items?
Mayor, I have not received any forms for non-agenda items.
Okay.
Only the two that I've delivered to you.
Very good. Thanks a lot. And these are for agenda items. So at this time, we won't be accepting any more speaker request forms moving forward. So the next item is a public presentation, five point one.
Sorry. I thought per our new council rules that we had speakers heard on everything at the beginning. The public forum.
That's right. Yeah.
So.
We, are they?
Yes.
That's right. A brand, brand new rule. Haven't used, even used it yet. So Dave, help me out with that.
Well, our, our format hasn't caught up with our rules.
Yeah.
So the, I think number five, the public presentation under our new rules is, is identified as special presentations, like the one from the library tonight. And number four is speakers heard on
Everything.
any agenda item other than that kind of special presentation.
Right. Okay, so, so the agenda, just Alex, just, so the agenda just needs to be formatted in accordance with our new rules.
Yes, and
Thank you.
Hector and I have been talking about that today.
So I'm going to my preference would be to just follow the agenda as it is tonight, ask the council to relax the rules for tonight, and then I'll be looking for a new format on this agenda at the next meeting, just so I don't have to be so mindful about it. Councilor Prenamoroff?
Well, I, I think it would be a lot easier and also for folks not having to stay so long is if we, if we did hear all the speakers now, I think, what did we say? There were two? And just kind of have that out of the way and then the public presentation. Rather than having them, folks having to hang out. I mean, I, that, that's my inclination is just to have the speaker.
That's, that makes sense. And yeah, I didn't, that, that, that makes perfect sense. Councilor Coley?
My one question is, is there any expectation to have a back and forth conversation with people speaking about Little League, or are they just speaking on that agenda item?
Yeah, that, that's the case. Speaker request forms, that's the case for every item, is that there is no back and forth. So, but sometimes just for audience, we'd do like to let them know that if there's more discussion on non-agenda items, we can talk about it on other. Okay, so I'm just thinking about what do I need to do procedurally here? I, I'm just going to follow the rules as they're adopted and catch me if I miss it based on this agenda. Will you help me out, Dave?
Okay.
Thanks. Okay, so with that, then we're going to speak, we're going to hear from all speakers. Is that anybody? Okay. We're going to hear from all speakers. We're still on number four. Thank you, Councilor Prenamoroff. So the first speaker request form I have is for Shonda Bursk. Shonda, please step forward and state your name and your city for the record.
Is that okay? Shonda Bursk, Phoenix.
And we provide you with five minutes. Will somebody do a timer for me? Thank you, Eleanor, or Councilor Prenamoroff.
Good. All right. My name is Shonda Bursk. I'm a mom of three, coach, and a board member at Phoenix Talent Little League. I just wanted to take this opportunity to just kind of tell you guys more about what we do and why I think it's so important. I don't feel like we've had the opportunity to quite tell all of you guys more about it. So this year, we have a hundred and seventy kids signed up, ages four through thirteen. We now, we just checked this morning, have fifty-seven volunteers that have gone through various training and background checks and many, many more that volunteer for field cleanups. And in the concession stand, we have about twelve board members. And we have thirty-plus local businesses that sponsor teams, donate gift cards, supplies, and much more. All these businesses help us maintain our facilities. They help with jerseys, equipment, and pay for any family or any kid that can't afford it. We've never turned down anyone that who is not able. I would say on average, maybe at least five a year, probably. We, they, they can't pay and it's, it's no problem. So we have equipment provided if they need, no questions asked. Our league is the least expensive out of all of the leagues. Our local leagues, there's Medford Nationals, Medford American, Ashland, Central Point, Gold Hill, Rogue River, and then us here for Phoenix Talent. We charge about seventy-five to ninety-five, depending on the T-ballers versus the older kids. The other local leagues are anywhere from a hundred to a hundred and ninety. And they do not have to pay to maintain any of their fields or anything like that. So we're, I would say, very reasonable, and we think it's very important that we keep those costs down so that people are able to play. We have a lot of kids that walk, you know, on their own. They just come to practices and games, because not everybody has the ability to get there. The only other, there's no other rec reational thing like Y M C A or anything like that. We're the only one that has rec baseball and softball. Travel ball is anywhere from four hundred to four thousand dollars a season. That's just one season, and usually they're two to three, depending on the leagues. And that doesn't include travel, your hotel, food, anything like that. So multiply that by a couple of kids and it's not very doable for most. I would guess that probably eighty percent of our kids would probably have no means to play softball or baseball if it weren't for Phoenix Talent Little League. So we're super thankful to be able to offer that to everybody. We, this is for twenty twenty-four, what we have kind of some of our costs that we pay for. So our field maintenance is fifteen thousand three hundred ninety-six dollars. About fourteen thousand of that goes to paying people to mow and things like that. And also repairs of any of the equipment, any of the irrigation, things like that. The complex for our weeds and things like that is just under two thousand, and that's all done through, through people that basically are acceptable through you guys. We, we want to make sure that we do that. You know, what you guys say is okay to, to have. So we take that really serious. Our utilities are about thirty-six hundred. That's for water, garbage, power, internet. Jerseys and hats are anywhere from six to eight thousand usually a year. Those, it keeps on sneaking up more and more each year. So with that being said, we just, we want to make an affordable place for kids to be. I think that it's really important for kids to be outside and to
One minute, one minute.
Oh, okay, sorry. So anyways, I just think that it's a really great place. It teaches kids teamwork, responsibility, how to win and lose graciously. The most important thing for me is teaching my kids to be selfless, putting others before themselves, and having a servant's heart, helping their community and others, something bigger than themselves. It's, as you guys all know, any extracurricular, anything is, it goes above and beyond of just what it is that we're playing. It's not just baseball and softball. It's lifelong relationships and things like that. So I just would encourage that all of you guys come out and even just see what it's about. The fun busy nights are super fun. Everyone is out. It's just a really happy place to be. And so we're just really thankful for the, the fields that we, that we have. And even the four fields that we have is, we outgrow, we use multiple fields, and so we're thankful for it and that's it.
Thank you, Shonda.
And if you guys do have any questions.
The next speaker is, I hope I get this right, Matt Nawalchik? Okay.
So, hi, everybody. My name is Matt Nawalchik. I'm also a board member. I'm a coach. I have a couple of kids that play in the league. And a couple of years ago, I, you know, I've been a baseball fan my whole life. I'm huge into baseball. And a couple of years ago, I said, I want to get involved. And I got on with the board and I mean, I grew up going to summer camp and playing fall ball and just playing throughout the whole year. So I went into the board meeting and I was all excited. I said, what can I do? Because I realized we didn't have summer camp, you know? So what can I do to get that in place? And what can we do for fall ball? And it's, you know, we were met with, we can only use the fields during the baseball season. So basically, like July, in the summer, we can't even use the baseball fields for baseball. We can just maintain them. And I just hope that you guys consider that or just think about that, you know, that, I mean, we're maintaining the fields throughout the entire year. And then also the popularity of baseball, the sport as a whole, it's just gone up. And even now, there's so many more kids. It's, it's really neat to see, like Shonda touched on, the community part of it. You know, between all the sponsors and all the, all the people that comes together, even the kids all throughout the year, it's like, Coach Matt, Coach Matt, you know, it's really cool, you know? And the community part of it. And, and like I said, we're, we're so busy right now that there's, I mean, I came from practice tonight. We had to share a field with another team, but this, this, there's that many kids that want to play. So yeah, like Shonda said, I hope you guys can come check it out and just see how great this really is for the, you know? Thanks, thanks. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. All right. The next item on the agenda is special presentations, and that's five point one is presentations by the Jackson County Library System.
Mayor, you have a hand.
I know. Yeah.
Okay.
Thanks. I spoke with I spoke with, oh. So this is another speaker. Did he, did we have a speaker request form from Derek Volcar?
I did not receive one, mayor.
Okay. So at this time, we're not taking any more speakers. So the next, thank you, Collette. I thought it was a different hand that was up earlier, so. And we had already adjust, addressed it. All right, so the next item on the agenda, Councilor Prenamoroff?
We got an email from Derek Volcart about wanting to speak. But I guess he didn't, he didn't email the public speaking request email.
There was no email from Derek Volker received that public testimony.
That public testimony.
Correct. And he did not submit one here either.
Okay, okay, thank you. So the next item on the agenda is the presentation from the library, five point one.
Thank you, esteemed mayor, council, and the city team of the city of talent. It is an honor to be here today on behalf of the Jackson County Library Board. My name is Marta Terence, and I'm one of the five at-large library board members. We have some scripted remarks, and then we will be sharing some information with you that I see many of you received about our key performance indicators. I live in Medford. I live in Jackson County. Last time I presented to you was in this building, but the time I presented to you before then was actually in the old town hall. That was the subject of your discussion previously. So thank you for giving great attention to a cool project. Jackson County Library District, which has celebrated ten years of being an independent, so to speak, library district, and we've served Jackson County residents for over a hundred years total. As a special district, the library is funded by a dedicated mill levy on property taxes, and right now, we're collecting that at sixty cents for one thousand dollars of assessed value. The library is governed by the at-large board of five members, so you have twenty percent of the board here with you today, and we all serve in those at-large positions. Some key statistics from the last year that we'd like to highlight for you. We had one point three one million items, physical items circulated. We had four hundred sixty-three thousand seven hundred and eight digital items circulated. Over ten thousand individuals received new library cards, and that includes children and adults. And forty-six thousand people attended the two thousand one hundred and fifty programs offered. We have fifteen branches, and talent, of course, has one of the fifteen. And all of those branches welcomed over seven hundred and twenty thousand individual visits, folks into the branches. That is absolutely tremendous, and I'll let Kerry May, our library director, share more.
What is my job? And the data that you all have in front of you is the dashboard specifically of the talent branch, of the statistics that were just shared. And on that last page of your report, you have a sample of some of the programs that are offered here at the talent branch library. Our mission is to connect everyone to information, ideas, and each other. And our vision is that individuals reach their full potential and our communities thrive. We achieve those goals through our five-year strategic plan, which we provide, we got community input through surveys and focus groups for that strategic plan. We are in year four of that five-year plan. The four goal areas in that plan include energizing our library services and resources, recognizing that while our libraries are much more than just books, our collection and materials remain a core part of our service. We have added video games and library of things to our collection over the last couple of years, and our things include everything from ukuleles to sewing machines to metal detectors. An instant pot, if you've never cooked with one of those, those types of things are in that collection. And we also recognize that our programs for all ages are a core service. Our second area of focus in our goals was to expand our library service hours. I've been in this district since two thousand eighteen, and when I first got here, that was the question I heard the most is, can we open more hours? We want more hours. And I'm very excited to say that in April of twenty twenty-three, we were able to expand our service hours across the whole system by almost forty percent. For here in talent, that means that you all open now six days a week. And every branch in our system is open on Thursdays until seven P M., and every branch is also open on Saturday. So even our smallest community, Butte Falls, serving a population of four hundred, is open on Saturdays. Additionally, we have installed holds pickup lockers for twenty-four seven access to library resources. Those have been installed at our Shady Cove branch and also at the Y M C A in Ashland. Our third goal area is to engage the community more fully. We want to be sure that the services and programs that we offer are representative of what our community wants and needs. We actively seek community partnerships and have a robust outreach department that extends our services beyond our walls. Our outreach services include partnerships with local daycare centers, home delivery of materials to patrons who cannot physically access the library, students in our K-12 system, including homeschoolers, mobile technology services through DART and business outreach. We are specifically focused on increasing our support for the following populations, which are the unhoused, the Latinx, homeschoolers, and tribal members. And finally, our fourth goal area is to nurture our library infrastructure, and by that, we mean our staff. If you all have been to the library, you know how amazing our staff here at the Talent Library is, and we want to make sure that they have the tools and information they need to be able to do their jobs properly and also be compensated fairly for that work. We encourage professional development and conference attendance for our staff. So those are our four, four goal areas, and I'm going to turn it back to Marta for some local stories.
Yes. Thank you so much, Kerry. One of our goals, because I also serve on the library's advocacy committee, is to keep collecting the amazing stories of how the libraries impact and empower our neighbors and all of us. And I wanted to share something that I think we could all use at seven fifteen on a weekday evening, and that is a heartwarming testimony. Some of us still use Yelp, and so I want to share with you the most recent, as of today, review on Yelp of the talent branch. Super in every way, Talent Library is the most pleasant possible place to browse, read, work online, select materials to borrow, dot, 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 dot. The staff also deserve all the good adjectives. Helpful, knowledgeable, pleasant, see for yourself. I love this review because it mentions the word pleasant twice, and as a board member, will love seeing all the good adjectives, and that's really awesome. But that's not it. Some of us still use TripAdvisor. I certainly do not, but some of us do. Well, on TripAdvisor, the Talent Library is rated as number one of the thirteen things to do in talent. I think that's quite stunning. And what they say, and this is a bit of a throwback to the pandemic times. It says, what would we do without our libraries? I love this place, and it helped me tremendously through the many hours of solitude during the pandemic. Staff is so efficient, and a huge thank you to all the J C L S staff keeping us in books, DVD, CD, computer time, et cetera. You're awesome and definitely essential, and the tagline for it was an essential service. So this one's from twenty twenty-one, but I love it because it shows that the library has been here for our amazing residents. And so I don't know when you may see us again in a presentation like this. We're all about to head into budget season, so we appreciate you making the time on the agenda to hear from us today. The branch here is absolutely superb. The staff and the volunteers are amazing, and I encourage you to give additional attention to the K P I's about the talent specific library we put before you. We're assembling that for every community we're visiting, and it's something new that we do. Thank you so much.
And I also just want to add that we did recently create an advocacy toolkit, which shares information about our libraries and, and what we do year-round at the library. And we have created a, an email group that if any of you are interested in learning more about the library, Alex, I can share that with you to share out with the, with the council members. And I mentioned our mobile technology van, DART, Direct Access to Resources and Technology is itself a mobile hotspot. And we've partnered with the Fire, Firebrand Collective and also the Long Term Group when they were doing the, the resource fairs in the community. Having Dart there, there meant that our community partners and those experts from FEMA and other resources had internet access and could help people sign up on those forms right there in the moment. So that was a really special way we helped connect with our community. Thank you.
Thank you for your help with our recovery.
Thank you.
Lovely.
Any questions?
Yeah, this, yeah, we're in presentation. So do you, anybody have any questions? Councilor Prenamoroff?
Yeah, so I, I think I've heard that, that you all offer some training to seniors and folks not familiar with technology. That, is that difficult?
That is true. Yes, we have a digital services department that we have renamed Technology Education, just because that's a little more understandable in our community. And we actually have, are launching a pilot program with H plus here in talent to do a class. Our, our first cohort will be a class of eight to ten seniors that will have a dedicated library technology education specialist leading that class and using a curriculum that is through a senior network that we are working with. But yes, we do both classes and one-on-one appointments that you can schedule through the library to have assistance with, with whatever technology need you have specifically. Thank you.
Anybody else? Thanks again. Always good to see you.
Thank you.
For your great work. Next item on the agenda is six point one, Department Reports. Staff?
Thanks, Mayor, members of the council. Chief Snook is prepared to provide you all an overview of the annual police department report.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Before you is the twenty twenty-four annual review for the Talent Police Department. I'm pleased to present our third year in a row we've been doing these reports. I don't know if you got a chance to review them, if you have any questions, or if you just go through it real quick if you'd like.
I do have some questions.
Okay.
So I, do you want to, but do you want to review it first? It's a great report, chief. If you want to go through it first.
Yeah, I can't take the credit for the report itself. I'm not that talented, but I do have a great assistant. So, you know, as far as the organization, we remain to be fully stopped at nine sworn positions with me being the most senior. With uh, me being the most senior uh, staff person of the department at twenty-four and a half years. And then our newest officer has been on the department for one year. So I'm pleased that we're going into our second year of being fully staffed. And really, it's actually um, two and a half years that we've been fully staffed. Um, with that, it's enabled us to uh, you know, do more training. Um, we found that, you know, being fully staffed, now we're running into the issues of our training dollars aren't going very far, um, like they have in the past, but um, we're able to send our officers to some um, trainings, and we have one that's coming up. It's going to a two-week specialty school, it's called Drug Recognition Expert. So he will be able to further analyze um, going beyond just like a regular alcohol, DUI arrest. It's people that are um, also impaired on other substances, substance, marijuana, um, you know, methanol, even prescription drugs. So that's a pretty intensive training. It's two weeks of classroom, and then it's another week of evaluations and being observed, you know. Um, more training beyond that, so we were pleased he was one of um, I'm not sure how many applicants in the state, it's a process that you have to be selected, and you just don't apply and get approved. So we have, you know, some information on our, what our S R O did throughout the year. Um, some good accomplishments there. He uh, remains to stay pretty busy. We also have him review, uh, we get cross reports from the Department of Human Services for um, his child abuse allegations. He takes those reports, if they're related to the school, he'll take those. Um, but if they're not, then fully assigned to a patrol officer to um, to continue that investigation. Um, so that's been helpful to have the second set of eyes on those reports. And we got, you know, some of the community engagement activities that we did this last year. Um, we're pleased to, we're gonna try to do the trick-or-treat again and make it bigger and better this coming year and do some copies with the cop, and we have Ted and Lee scheduled. Let's we got some of the crime statistics on here. Um, you know, our our workload continues to go up. If you look in like sponglements with some of the case law changes and juveniles being able to expunge their records, we're seeing a big increase on that level with our um, office staff, who we goes. Um, we, you know, took in a hundred and twenty pounds of medication that we were able to safely dispose of. And um, the spider tech, I'm I'm not sure if you had a chance to read those comments, but um, really great positive feedback. I mean, we we do get, you know, some negative feedback and uh, you know, some of it is uh, valid and some of it is just, you know, we can't solve everybody's problems and they're not uh, pleased that we can't do that, so. You know, to have an overall satisfaction of four point six seven out of five, I'm pretty proud of. Um, that's out of five hundred and forty-seven survey responses that were submitted. And um, which is pretty consistent with the other agencies that are doing one of the law. It's Central Point, Metford, Ashland, and us are the only ones in the, and the Sheriff's Office that are doing it in the valley at this time. Calls for service, they continue to to go up. Now, we have uh, I know at one point you had asked about thefts. And so that's, you know, those numbers are listed on here, and they seem to trend about the same, um, you know, other larceny, larceny has gone up slightly, but um, certainly not um, too concerning, I mean, you know, theft from anybody is concerning, but it's not um, it hasn't upticked greatly. Um, our officers arrested four hundred or forty-two DUI arrests, so um, that's a great accomplishment. So I I look at that as, you know, potentially removing um, somebody that could kill, kill a family uh, member, loved one from the roadway. Getting forty-two impaired drivers off the road is um, a big achievement for a agency our size. Last year we had twenty-five, so that's a um, pretty big increase. And that's about it. I'm not, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to take them.
Um, I do have a couple of questions, and first I want to preface this by saying that uh, this is a great report. And just what I was hoping to see when you were saying you were going to get this. I think this is a new, kind of a new format for this report, yeah, that's great. I do um, I I I do have a couple of questions just from the standpoint to that this um, if you do proceed with a police department study, that some of this information may be used, so I want to kind of um, get some clarity on a couple of things. Um, so let's see, the, I'm I'm trying to get to the right page. Um, this report showed um, call volume from two thousand nineteen forward, let me see if I can find that page here.
Page twelve.
Page twelve, thank you. Yeah, um, and it's interesting, the the call volume in two thousand nineteen is nine thousand, and when we had a population, we're just at uh, just a little bit more than the population we currently have, and it looks like we're, we're getting back to that call volume uh, as of two thousand twenty-four uh, with seven, nine thousand in two thousand nineteen and seventy-seven hundred in two thousand twenty-four. Um, I have a couple of questions about this, one of them is um, do you attribute some of the lower call volume post-fire to like staffing concerns? Or or is this literally the volume of phone calls that come through the system?
So it's a combination of self-initiated and calls through dispatch, so I could have the breakdown. Um, and I believe, yeah, so we have in two thousand twenty-four, it is broke down. Twenty-eight hundred citizen initiated and forty-nine hundred officer initiated. So officer officer initiated is um, could be anything from uh, you know, we have a problem, chronic problem residence, if they go do extra patrol, so if they check out on their computer saying that I'm at this location, then it will log a call. Um, or somebody comes to the counter and um, you know, wants assistance, maybe with say their child is being misadvised, and they come and say, hey, you know, I need some parenting tips or whatever. Um, or um, you know, follow-up to calls, don't necessarily flag it as a call, but it depends on uh, if it's the original officer or not. Um, this doesn't reflect traffic stops, it, so it reflects anything that they um, tell dispatch that they're outdoing. Um, whether it's a loose dog that they take to the animal control or um, you know, assist uh, like recently, I mean, this sounds pretty uh, low-level, but an elderly person in the middle of the night was having problems with their phone, the officer responded to their house. And then the next day, because it was in the middle of the night, they couldn't really help them. They sent the day shift officer over there to help them call the phone company so that we wouldn't get number one calls from their house anymore because of the phone line issue, so you know. And it was overwhelming for that elderly person, so the officer noted it for them. So um, this is just what that breakdown is. Uh, that, so so citizen initiated obviously is somebody calls dispatch and says, I need an officer for theft at Dollar General or whatever it might be.
Well, that that's a great answer, because it it does indicate to me that if I if I understood your answer right, that the staffing levels could play a part in the in the in the gener- generation of calls if the years were essentially the same, like we sort of had the same staffing levels in both of those years and um, uh, and and um, if everything's even, it could be just a a generation of of additional calls from maybe officer-initiated calls.
Yeah, and so two thousand nineteen, you see that nine thousand. Um, and I remember at the time, we had some really young, new officers that were in training. So obviously, uh, when people are in training, they're expected to perform and learn and uh, do a lot of self-initiated activity, uh, because that's the way they're going to have to do certain things that they're doing. And then Alameda hit, um, we were really short-staffed, but we had a high volume of calls because of all the activity, the patrols they were doing, um, all the extra patrols and stuff. And we even had, it wasn't even just our department patrol, and we had officers from every agency in the valley working shifts in town, very long, you know, not just specific town, but Phoenix town, period. So um, that isn't even a clue what they generally do, it's just town-specific.
Interesting. Um, so one last question I have on this point, and that is um, uh, you uh, did we have about the same staffing levels in two thousand nineteen that we have now, just approximately?
I believe so, we were, we were on the verge of being fully staffed and um, you know, COVID happened, I mean, um, and we lost some, and then that's when we also um, had coverage from Ashland or in June.
During two thousand nineteen?
Mm-hmm. Uh, it was two thousand twenty.
Okay, yeah, so the, yeah, you can see a big difference between two thousand nineteen and two thousand twenty, that makes sense to me, okay, great.
Yeah, and we did see a, after Alameda, we saw actually a significant decrease in calls for service as well.
You saw a decrease in service, yeah, that makes sense. Um, okay, and uh, let's see. When I looked at the arrest detail, it starts in two thousand twenty-one. And I think that if we are going to do analysis, it's going to be important for us to add two thousand twenty and two thousand nineteen as well, just for the consistency between to be able to analyze the call volume against the 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 crime detail.
Yes.
Yeah.
If you see, so some of it says, like on the bottom graph, it says N A under like DUI for twenty-one and twenty-two.
Mm-hmm.
Um, that was, we we had them, it's just that there was a change in the way I'm going to probably get this wrong, but the national incident, something, something that you report to the state rate in the federal government, it's for our data, that these are the crimes that they, gets reported to them, and they changed the way that was happening, so um, I could certainly go back into those numbers, that this wasn't common, how we pulled them this time.
Great, and I, believe me, I don't need them right away, I'm just saying that if if we're going to use some of this for future analysis, that I think to be able to make that previous report consistent with this report, that they should match in
Yeah.
in, uh, but otherwise, it's good information for the purpose that this is being presented tonight. And then finally, um, I wanted to ask about the the results of the community feedback. Um, and again, this, I'm thinking in terms of like, if we're going to use this, uh, some of this data moving forward. Um, so the community feedback comes solely, if I understand correctly, please correct me if I'm wrong, solely from people who are having some sort of experience, they need to call the police. So it it could be trauma-initiated, for example, right?
Um, certain calls don't, um, so what happens is somebody calls dispatch and this is programmed into their system where they'll get a message saying you're, you know, your case has been assigned to an officer, or will say your, your case is delayed um, because they're on something else, and they don't get dispatched to it right away. So it'll update them, and then basically at the end, when the officer closes the case, they will get the survey invite. Um, you know, we had sixty-nine hundred surveys sent, and we got five hundred and forty-seven responses. Um, that's not, which now I'm looking at this, and I'm thinking that can't be right, based on our citizen-initiated calls. So we'll have to check on that number, but um, but the rate is thirty-four percent basically that completed the survey. But not all calls, because some of them could be like a domestic or a sexual assault. They won't get the text because of the privacy of you know, somebody going, oh, who's texting you? Oh, you called the police, oh, yeah, so um, certain calls are flagged, but they don't send those messages to those callers.
It's really good information. I think what kind of stuck out for me about this question, and I'm, gets me to another question, is that I feel like um, you know, we've made some, we've made some additional investments in the police department the last few years, and and we see impact, we see um, seasoned officers on your team, um, great feedback about their interface with um, the officers. Those investments are evident in just that, just that what we can see and what we can, what we can talk about. But when you look at a, uh, when you look at a statistic about how safe do you feel living in, being in City of Talent, I would hope to see, I would love to see that question reflected in a survey to everybody, because I feel like when you're taking feedback from people who have just had some sort of traumatic experience, that that might be a skewed view, especially when you consider the the level of service that this shows as well, right? And um, so I I would hope if we go to do um, more research moving forward, that that we do consider a survey of people across the board. Uh, those who have had, you know, maybe using some of this data, but also people who just just live here and have the only interface they have with an officer is at the coffee shop or um, at the harvest festival, or you know, where they're, they're coming from an everyday experience viewpoint, and that I think is important data as well.
And we certainly get, not everybody that calls is uh, you know, faced with a negative experience, you know, we have people that call and say, my mom, my lonely mom's not answering the phone, and somebody go check on that one. And so, you know, they're answering these questions as well. Um, we really dive into a lot of the demographics, and so we have also um, you know, responses of how many people actually live in the city. Um, you know, their, their wages, their high, or their level of education, um, their living situation, if they're homeless, they're renting, homeowner, uh, business owner, or working talent. I mean, it breaks it down, and we just added one this month that says, um, you know, ask if they want a supervisor, you reach out to them. And so uh, we didn't have that on that before, but if, you know, I see a negative review, whether it's like, do I know why this turned out this way? I still reach out and call them and say, you know, the, the, sorry that you weren't satisfied, but, you know, we can't because you're having a custody battle, we can't solve your problem, you know, so um, you know, we just had somebody the other day that wanted to report something, and it wasn't wasn't an issue with the school, you know, we did all our research, and so they basically, because they didn't like the answer, and they just hung up. And their their review was very negative, and I it's, we'll get those, and I'm okay with that.
Yeah, I used to, for the company that I worked for, I used to train on reviews, and and you do all the right things. I I'm impressed with the way you guys handle reviews. Um, I I just feel like uh, it will just be important that we broaden the, broaden the audience a little bit, um, because I do, I do think that it gives us A, an opportunity to ask other questions, and B, um, it it sort of takes the the, I I think I made the point earlier that, you know, sometimes you're only getting informed by people who are having some kind of concern, and and it might be skewing some of the, some of the members a little bit about perception and that sort of thing. Um, so I think that was it. Um, yeah, I just want to say again, um, this is a great report. I love this kind of information, and uh, it reflects very well on our department. And that's really gratifying, considering the fact that we have made some significant investments in the department in the last few years. Uh, it shows. Yeah, thank you. Any other questions or comments? All right. Moving on to the next. Uh, are there any other department, uh, department reports?
No, tha- thank you, Mayor, I I will just add, um, it's been, it's been a real relief to me. Um, given that police is the area of city government that I probably have the least experience with, to have Chief Snook to work with, and I I will appreciate it.
Agreed. Item number seven on the agenda is the consent calendar, is there anything on the consent, uh, council buyers?
I just want to recognize, and that's beyond moment, but if you're in our police department recently, when they were wrangling a herd of cows out of Talent Avenue. That's not something I think we probably trained for. Me too, but I was like, as a police officer, I don't think that's something they cover at the academy, so.
Keep the chief out there. Um, I hear a lot of really great things about Officer Lehman, too, as you know. Keep the chief out there. Um, I hear a lot of really great things about Officer Lehman too, as you know. Uh, Heather is a school teacher at the middle school and they talk and boy, you know, the value and the change that that has brought to that school. Um, okay, anything else? Great. Thanks again, Chief. Yeah. Item number seven is the consent calendar. Anything on the consent calendar that anybody wants to pull out for discussion? Council Penomarif?
It's not to pull up for discussion. I just noticed we're talking about, we have the budget calendar in the consent and, we see that March nineteenth, our next council meeting will be, um, uh, appointing the budget committee. I just wanted to check in and, and see if we have, uh, six, six people, um, in the budget committee already, or should we be recruiting?
Thank you. We, we do have a, we do have a full slate to refer you all to.
Let's see, and, um, the two, you know what? I'm curious about, um, the appointment of budget member, Nidia Garcia. It's funny, this just reminded me of it. Did it get too late to get on this agenda?
Yeah, uh, my understanding is that, uh, recently you were able to connect with Nidia and then interview and then make a recommendation. Is that correct?
Uh huh.
So, uh, a place around the next.
Perfect.
Same calendar.
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to make sure that I closed loop on my end.
Great, that'll be, that'll be the final member, so then it'll be full.
Okay, very good. All right, if there's nothing else, we'll go ahead and entertain a motion for adoption of the consent calendar. Council Penomarif?
I moved to adopt the consent calendar. Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the consent calendar. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I'm sorry to interrupt, but this just reminded me of something. There is new information about how to take a vote when you're also running on Zoom. Um, and Dave, I can't remember the details, but I did remember that I wanted to bring it up to you. So we should probably take a look at that. Um, and I think it's through the, I think I got it through the OJ EC training. And I think you, I think there's a, um, anyway, please remind me to talk about it because we might need to put it in. It's a, it's a new rule and it might need to go into our council rules. Counselor Colley?
Maybe I'm not remembering this correctly, but didn't we talk about this like a few meetings ago and decide that we would do all votes roll call? Because of that, you brought it up and then talked about.
Is that?
So that people can hear on the Zoom.
Yeah, so.
We talked, I don't know if we adopted.
Yeah, I think I'm just going to go ahead and do that for, uh, for a good caution, but I do think we need to write it into our council rules is really the point I'm trying to get at. So let's go ahead and do a roll call vote. Hector?
Council Colley?
Yes.
Council Penomarif?
Yes.
Council Medina is not present. Counselor Prestizo?
Yes.
Counselor Byers?
Yeah.
Counselor Perry Miller?
Yes.
Motion carries, Mayor.
Thank you, Hector. And I think actually Council Penomarif had brought it up and, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, well done, Counselor. Um, okay. Uh, thank you, Dave. So the next item on the agenda is eight point one, approval of the Little League agreement. Staff report.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Um, you have, um, my staff report and a draft, um, lease for the ball fields just south of Chuck Roberts Park. Um, the Little League has, uh, been there for about twenty years, I understand. Um, under, uh, the prior lease that is, uh, expiring this year. The Little League had requested, um, a, a new lease of five years with an option to extend, uh, another five years. Um, it was the sense of staff with some input from, uh, council that, um, that that was probably not what you all wanted to do. Um, given the interest that has come up in a couple different contexts of, uh, other uses for that, uh, facility or that field or that area. So, um, what we have put together is a lease document that is for five years only. Um, it includes the key items that were added as a, as a, side agreement or, or addenda to the, to the former lease to, to address some of the concerns that neighbors had had in the past. And, um, and so the, um, I think the, the only, uh, additional thing I, I will say to, um, is, we, um, we do have a, a couple, um, corrections that we prepared to make to the, um, to, to the lease agreement. I'm happy to talk about them. There was, uh, a, a statement, the, uh, I misgendered the, the city manager. Um, I, I understand it's not our practice, our practice to gender the city manager at all. And, um, and we also had, um, used the language from the side agreement rather than the current city's language about pesticide use. So we, um, we have to offer to you, if you want to move forward with, um, uh, acceptance of this lease, some adjustments to the, to that language. In addition, we got a request, um, this week from the Little League to include some language about, um, ownership of the, the improvements that the Little League, Little League has made to the site. Um, which generated some further discussion, uh, from, from council, uh, about the, whether those, um, what state the, we, this lease would leave the site in, um, at the end of its, at the end of its period. Um, and so I think with that, I'll, I'll, I'll pause and, and see if there, um, further discussion from the council. Um, I'm not ready to make a recommendation at this point on, uh, adoption of the lease, because I think there are some outstanding questions.
And did we get, um, suggested language for that, um, added piece?
Yes, um, so, uh, they, they've, uh, worked that up, um, and, um, should we distribute it? So what, uh, Dave had suggested was that, um, parties agree that, um, the following structures on the premises, as of the execution of this lease agreement are the property of Little League. The dugouts, the concession building, the viewing stands, fences, backstops, and the two structures along the tree line adjacent to Arness Road. I should, I should preface all this by saying that, brought the expiring lease agreement didn't address the ownership of these things at all. Um, and, um, and so that, that was the piece that the, uh, the Little League had requested with some modification. We made it, um, a bit more specific than the language the Little League had requested. Um, they, they also requested that, and, and this reflects that, some proposed language, the city shall give, Little League at least ninety days advance notice of any termination of this lease agreement. Um, Little League will remove all of its property, including structures, from the premises before the date of such termination. That is not something that they requested. Um, any Little League property remaining on the premises after such termination shall be deemed to have been abandoned.
Are there any questions? Does everybody want to take a minute to, to, is everybody still reading? Okay.
And, do, go, go ahead, Dave.
What, what's highlighted in yellow are the changes from, oops.
Are the changes from the document that was in the packet that you received. And, uh, I, I understand there was some concern about the, that's, that that last highlighted sentence in, uh, four D, uh, regarding, uh, uh, you know, taking, taking structures that the Little League had put on the premises. And, and saying that if they don't take them, then they're considered abandoned. And I believe there was somebody who proposed, maybe that's, we don't want that sentence, because we want to make sure they, they do take them. So if that were the council's, uh, interest, um, we could just strike that sentence. Um, but I should say, uh, I don't think Little League has had a chance to look at this. So, uh, um, I'm not, I'm not sure that, uh, I mean, the council may, I may, may want to say, we like the, the changes, maybe with that sentence stricken or not. But I don't think the Little League is ready, uh, to say yes to this until they have a chance to see it, of course.
Yeah, that was me. Um, and what I, yeah, what I was trying to get at is that, um, Little League would be responsible for removing everything that they own. Yeah, rather than.
If we struck that last sentence, that it would.
It would affect.
It would do.
Can we do that? Okay. What's, what's, some recommendations that you made about maintenance? Are they here?
I'll call them out. They were changed as well.
They were changed?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm, I'm not sure we, we gave you the, the line on the pesticide use. So if, um, we, we had no concern about that. And I actually talked to Matt at Little League and he didn't have any concern about that at all either. He, they're, they're complying with, with the, uh, the letter of our rule, I think. As I said, we, we just use the language from the side, from the old side agreement, at which point I think there's a transition period. Anyway.
No, you explained it very well. It's just a women yellow highlighted.
That's my, my mistake.
It is in there.
No, no.
Didn't make the change.
Oh.
Failed with highlight.
Wasn't there more than one? Was there more than one?
So it was, um, the numbering, which is fixed. There was nine nine, now it's nine ten. There was, um, his first city manager. And then there was, um, uh, ten D, what we now have, um, fully complying with integrated pest management, um, policies. And at that time, it was like phasing out.
Yeah.
I'd say we changed the prohibition against the use of synthetic pesticides.
Thank you, Counselor. Yeah, I think it's the one, two, three, four, five, six words after the comma in D that were, were changed.
Yeah. So procedurally, I want to make sure I heard you correct. Um, I'm hearing two different things. Actually, I'm hearing you can adopt as amended. Um, or, but you said you were not prepared to make a recommendation. Um, so what, is that, what, did I hear that wrong?
So, uh, I, what I would, what I meant is I'm not prepared to recommend that you adopt the lease as provided in the packet. Um, without further discussion of this language. I didn't, I didn't realize that they've had done as much work as he had on this version. So I, um, and I think the, the only other point being, so, my recommendation would be to adopt this, uh, that you could direct us to, um, see if this as proposed is acceptable to Little League. And that's certainly, uh, reasonable.
Counselor Perry Miller and then Counselor Prestizo.
Um, so Alex, it sounds like some of these changes have been discussed with Little League, but not all of them. Is that what you said?
That's exactly.
Been verbally discussed and others have been female discussed?
Yes, so the, the only, the only thing that hasn't been discussed is the, um, that second sentence of four D, Little League will remove all of its property, including structures from the premises before the date of such termination.
Yeah, I'm just wondering, um, thinking back to during public comments, is, is there something in here that limits what parts of the year they can and can't use the facility if the lease is agreed to by everybody? Yeah, and, and if there is a limit, I'm just curious why there is.
Counselor, would you?
Question, I, I didn't understand.
Oh, well, I'm gonna look for, look for hands, just so I can control the audio. Okay, uh, so Counselor Prestizo.
Yeah, during the, um, public comments, it was stated that they wanted to do like a summer league, for lack of a better term, but they weren't allowed to use the field in July. And so I just don't know why that is. And maybe there's a reason.
Um, it would, I would take a change, a waiver of the rules, is my understanding. Um, the.
Is it in the old agreement? Counselor Byers?
I missed it, but I didn't see it in there. I was scrolling through, looking for that, having heard the, um, that in comments and being curious about that.
So I'm going to ask for a waiver of the rules and invite Shonda to the dais to have this conversation with us. Counselor Namrav?
Yeah, I moved to, uh, suspend the rules.
Exactly.
Okay, um, we have a motion and a second to suspend the rules. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Counselor Colley?
Yes.
Counselor Penomarif?
Yes.
Counselor Prestizo?
Yes.
Counselor Byers? And Counselor Perry Miller? Motion carries, Mayor.
Shonda, you can actually take the, the podium there, but you are, you are now invited to have an open discussion with us. So I think somebody wants to ask, what was your question again?
Why, or if there is a reason that, uh, Little League can't use the field during the rest of the year?
Yeah, just in the previous, um, uh, lease and contract, we're only allowed to use it for the Little League season. So I think it's officially April first, um, March first, yeah, March first, um, until the end of July, just the season. And then the rest of the time, we're only allowed to be on it, just to maintain it and keep it up.
Counselor Byers?
So this would be a question for staff, I guess, since that provision is not in this current lease, would that limitation still exist?
No, sorry, I, I did not get your question. Sorry, Counselor. Um, so, um, this, this agreement allows the Little League to allow other users throughout the year, as long as it doesn't conflict with the Harvest Festival, um, with approval from the city manager. So it would, it would expand their ability to use the field during, uh, other periods of the year, including potentially, uh, allowing, uh, other, other, other users that would then potentially pay fees to the Little League in return for the Little League's maintenance, um, and support their maintenance costs.
But could they also use it for their own purposes to have either a summer league or a fall week?
I, I don't think there's any prohibition, the, the limitation, the monthly, the monthly limitation isn't in this version at all.
The only limitation is that it would have to be used for sports related purposes.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
And, and the city's approval.
So both the seasonality limitation has been removed and they've been explicitly allowed to, to, to rent it to others with the city's approval for sports uses.
Can I ask a, a clarifying question, Shonda? Um, did you say that you found that language in your previous lease agreement?
Yeah, I believe it's in the, in the previous, in the, the current one that we have.
Counselor Byers?
I've got the two thousand lease here and I don't see that language in there.
Me neither. I don't see it in the old one either. Um, I just.
I don't have it in front of me, but that, when we took over the board, the, that's just what it was, is that the city had just only allowed us to use it for that season. We couldn't use it year round. So I, I'll definitely look to find, find that original.
I, uh, it strikes me as odd, I'm just going to say this for the record, I was on, it was liaison to parks when the old lease came before us back in the day. And, um, and then also in twenty eighteen, when there was an amendment to the lease. I think Cal Ripken, Ripken was working hard to get that space. Um, and in both cases, I just don't remember ever any language like that. I would really be curious to see that. really be curious to see that, if you could, somebody could email that to the council.
Apologies for interrupting there. If I, if I may. I'm not, I'm not sure of the issue. Um, the lease as proposed doesn't limit the timeframe, and I don't hear any interest from the council in limiting the timeframe.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not hearing that either. Yeah. Counselor Byers?
Um, I was just saying, I was asking those questions to ensure that it wasn't limiting the timeframe, like the potential past lease.
I just would like to see it, I just would like to see a copy of it, if that's possible. Um, Counselor Penamoroff?
I think I see it in the old lease, under maintenance city use. Um, about four lines down, it says during the off-season, when the field is not in Little League use, the parties contemplate that by mutual agreement, and such, blah, blah, blah. Little League may make the premises available to the city for public use. So there is a, a mention of an off-season, and maybe that's what you were interpreting to mean you're not supposed to use it during the off-season.
Uh, yeah, possibly. I'll have to look, and just previously with talking with Gary and stuff, that was the the old verbiage that we were under the impression, I mean, we've never used it outside of those times. So we just wanted to be able to, and just make sure that that was acceptable to you guys. So I mean, previously, I, we could have misunderstood something for sure, but that's just when we were handed over and speaking with Gary originally, that was the, the verbiage in it, that we, you know, could use it during that in-season time. So if we misunderstood that again, that very well could it be, we just want to make sure that it can be used for kids, I mean, soccer or anything, just we want to not be doing something that we're not supposed to, maybe outside of that timeframe, so.
Shonda, and just, just to be clear, my curiosity is about if there was some sort of agreement, I know the neighbors have been very involved in, in um the Little League over the years and, and concerned, and there've been ongoing, like, maintenance negotiations that have happened many times over the years, and I would want to see it just to make sure we're not missing something. Um, I, I appreciate the point that it's not in here, but um but I would definitely want, if there's, if there's something in it that we're not aware of here and now, I, I'd be curious to find out what that, where that came from. Counselor Cooley?
Yeah, it sounds like maybe you all are a newer generation of board members, and that might have been something that came to you in the past, so echoing what the mayor's saying, like, if there was some other agreement that was made that we're, we don't know about, and yeah.
And for whatever reason.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We just want to make sure that we're abiding by everything that you guys are saying, so we just want to make sure that we're not doing something we're not supposed to, so.
I appreciate that, hearing that. Um, okay. Um, are there any other questions or comments? Counselor Perry Miller?
Thank you. Um, I had a question. I don't know if Alex can answer this. If, if there are other events that are organized on the fields, will those events have to go through, like, the city special use permitting process that like all other events have to go through, or would it be different because this is a part of a lease? Or do you have thoughts on that?
That's, that's a great question. I would certainly uh ask Dave that question, if it came to me, but my suspicion is a regular sports activity would not trigger the city's special uh event permitting requirements, but I've never reviewed it. I suspect there is there are some uses that would trigger a, a, a special event permit.
Off, off the top of my head, uh, I would say a special use permit would not be triggered um by the Little League, let's say, loving soccer teams, because they're the less eat um in, in effect, they control the property within the limits that we're setting in this agreement. And the lim, one of the limits is council approval, but that doesn't necessarily mean special permit approval.
Yeah, because it says, oh, sorry, just to follow up, it says consent from the city needs to be obtained, but it, you know, it doesn't go into that. So again, it was just, I was just thinking of that again, because of the neighbors and the, the use of the field, and just like the different communication that has happened in the past, so.
Yeah.
That was just something that I was wondering.
Yeah, I, if I, if I may, I, I think they, they would be requesting use for some, if they were, if the Little League were requesting use for something other than a soccer game, or something that's clearly uh envisioned by the um, by this agreement. Um, we would certainly, I would certainly apply the standards of um what, whatever the, your special permit uh process is intended to capture and restrain. So I think we've, I think we're covered either way.
I ran the police chief, went to go look, so I, we're in good hands, I hope.
If I, I found just the, or Jake found this just a little per, the purpose in the lease, so under the purpose, it says the Little League shall use the premises for purposes of Little League games and no other purpose without the city's written approval. So by the under Phoenix Town Little League, those are, those are the timeframes that we can use it, and because we are under Phoenix Town Little League, then under the purpose, it says that we can only use it for Little League purposes. So under that timeframe, when we're only playing our Little League games, Little League does not go throughout the whole year, it's just for that time, but it doesn't mean that uh coaches would not go down and, you know, have summer games and things like that. But I think it's just because the verbiage, it says the Little League shall use the premises only for Little League. So it's just we're Little League all year, but the Little League sets the timeframe of, of when it goes, and so then, you know, it just we're just to those, those principles.
I think what it has in common with this one is that there's an exception, and that is with permission of the city manager.
Yeah.
So they're, in that way, they're both the same. Yeah. Counselor Byers?
My question is with the wording of that contract, I could see how it could be interpreted to apply specifically to the Little League season, but I could also see how it could be interpreted to apply to the entity that is holding the insurance. And to me, then that would mean that interview with the insurance could have their um sporting appropriate activities there at any time, as long as the insurance coverage applies along with the lease, as opposed to being limited to um a specific sporting um season.
Yeah, and thank you for sharing that with me, Shonda, because that satisfies my, my concern that there would be some other outline reasons for that, because it's really giving you, giving, giving the organization permission to come in if you get written permission from the city manager, so that doesn't suggest anything else. Um, Counselor Penamoroff?
Yeah, I was hoping to, this conversation makes me want to get some more clarity on section three purpose. Um, so I'm wondering there might, whether there might be a conflict between the city's interests and Little League's interests. If we look at A, it says for Little League's games and sports, so maybe that's extending past the season. And then there's B, which talks about the renting um with city approval. And then uh, and then C talks about council-approved improvements or modifications, and then D recreational programs sponsored by the city and talent festival, Harvest Festival parking. What, I mean, so what if there's like kind of an off-season, well, the city wants to do a recreational program, and Little League also wants to do, or wants to rent, you know, how are, you know, who, who wins, right? Or is it first come, first, and how is that, does the lease define how that might be negotiated?
Uh, I think so. So the, the, any activity beyond other little, regular Little League activities requires the approval of the, of the city manager.
Um, so are there any questions or comments? I think um there has been some input about the length of the lease. Um, I've heard five years without an extension, I've heard three years, I've heard annual renewals, um, a lease that doesn't have a uh, doesn't have an end date, but is renewable annually. And I think that relates to some of the discussions around the resolution. Um, I'd sent in a communication earlier suggesting that um there is a, there is a piece of um not entirely accurate information on the resolution that says the, whereas the city council has planned for future development of that site for additional housing since twenty twenty-one. And um, so uh I don't know. Um my understanding is that um the, the, actually, the, the council had um provided direction for an analysis of that property for housing, so there isn't like a defined decision uh for that plan. And it's, it's hard, uh, it's hard because the record's a little unclear, the, the minutes are a little unclear. Uh, but we have looked at it um during um during uh urban renewal discussions, there was uh some inquiries made and oh, there was another, I think it was a discussion with um, yeah, nope, they were both related to urban renewal. Um, so at the in twenty twenty-one, there was a discussion about two sites being analyzed for housing. Um, I think it was relevant to transitional housing at the time, but then uh, there was later discussions about it being analyzed for, for future housing. So I just want to make it clear that it isn't that the city has plans, firm plans for housing on that site, but, but we do, uh, we do the, there is a record of us wanting to get an analysis, so it might be a good idea for us to reaffirm that in a future meeting, if the council wants to reaffirm that. Um, but in the meantime, I, if we, if this resolution is going to get passed um even amended and as, even as amended, we probably would want to strike that, that line. So is there any discussion about the term, Counselor Penamoroff?
Yeah, um, I, I wanted to say I, I agree with your comments, and I'm not um looking to approve a resolution um like this uh at this time. I, I do like the idea of a more generalized resolution um to the effect of housing, especially affordable housing uh being high on our list of goals, and being, being a huge need of the region. And um the most efficient way a city can help create this much-needed housing is um with public lands. Uh, and I also wanted to say, I do really appreciate what you said, is we don't know that this land is necessarily conducive to great housing, we think it might be. Um, but, but we do need to investigate that further. Um, that said, and that having been a priority, I think of, of mine, and, and I think of the city in general um for many years, and a huge need, I'm, I'm not comfortable with locking that up for five years. Um, I'd be supportive, because we don't have immediate definite plans, I would be supportive of two years, perhaps, or three years. Um, but that's what I would be comfortable with at this time, and also when we have a chance to um investigate uh whether we could get some much-needed housing in that area.
Yeah, and I just want to mention the, the comment I heard about a year-to-year lease came from an email from uh former counselor Bullcart. I think maybe we all got a copy of it, I'm not sure.
Yeah, yeah, he did send out two of them.
Um, and so I'm stating that for the record. There's an email. Any further? Sure, yeah.
Um, because we're, we're not really sure um the schools' timeline for Culver and your guys' timeline. Um, it's hard for us, the last kind of just estimate that someone threw out to us is, is going to be about a, a million dollars a field. And that's on our dime. And so if if that doesn't get started until two years, we can't apply for grants, we can't ask community, you know, for money until we have a lease with the school to even be able to say okay, we can build these fields now, we're ready to go. And so I think that that is part of the, the thing that is hard for us is the timeframe, because we're just volunteers. Um, I, I didn't intend to have to go learn how to write grants and things like that. So for us to not even be able to be able to start until all of that is finalized, um, is just a little bit unsettling that we won't have a, a place. I mean, there's no, no other place to go. So I think we're that, that five years, I mean, it's, it's going to take a long time. And again, we can't start even now until that's finalized um and, and have a lease with the school, or, or figure out um anything official for, with that, so.
That's a good point. And so what I want to do is, if there's, ask if there's any more questions of Shonda, and then Shonda, I'll ask you to have a seat, because when we start deliberations, we can't. Uh, yeah. So are there any other questions or comments for Shonda? All right, thank you. You've been very, very helpful to this conversation. It's been great to have you. By the way, you're a great public speaker. All right. Are there any more comments before we start to head towards?
Yeah, I would just say, I've been thinking about this since I read Derek's email, and and from what I heard said today, well, I'm as much on board with we need um affordable housing in talent, it strikes me that um this is something that the current residents of talent, who it sounds like many of them may be struggling with affordable housing, and are maybe living in affordable housing now. It's something that they can do, that they can walk to. Um, and so it makes me lean a little bit towards trying to raise the priority of keeping a Little League going until they have another place to go, or we're really sure we have something to do with that property.
Counselor Byers?
Um yeah, I, I think that our community um really benefits from having a program like this, and I know we need affordable housing, I knew, I know we need housing of all sorts in Oregon right now, and in talent in particular. And I also think that it's a really difficult balancing act to ask a volunteer organization to do with no definite in mind. Even if we decide a two-year lease versus a five-year lease, I think some definite duration assessed with um developing um a timeline put before the school district, and then to assist in formatting a fundraising timeline as well. So I think whatever we do, there should be some, something definite within the the structure of of the duration of the lease.
Any other, Counselor Per, Perimor?
Um, I think that for where we are at this point, I don't, I agree with um Counselor Penamoroff, that I don't feel comfortable with the resolution that we have. Um but I do think based on um Gary's recommendation and his thoughtfulness about the planning of that space, the planning of Culver timeline, just like his vast experience with this kind of development, that was what he said. He said five years is a good amount of time. So I would be comfortable at this point going ahead. So I would be comfortable at this point going ahead with five years. I'm not super comfortable with the resolution and I don't know that it's necessary to do the resolution and the lease. But that's a sad question, I guess. Anyways, that's kind of where I'm falling right now.
Yeah, councillor Colley?
Yeah, I think I share the all the sentiments that's been shared that affordable housing is important, but you know, working in volunteer organizations and helping run smaller organizations. Really hard to think about your future when, you know, you don't have definite things in front of you. I don't personally have an issue with five years. I think especially to not knowing, like there isn't an exact use for that land. It sounds like did you say there has been a study done or there was talk of doing a study? So I just have a hard time like even making people think that we are going to take something away or something that doesn't even necessarily exist. Like it's at this point, just barely an idea. And I really appreciate the testimony that's been shared about the community need for the existing use. The idea of kids being able to walk to Little League, like that's what we want in town and that's part of affordability. So I agree about maybe the resolution not being what needs to happen right now, but as far as the lease term, I would define it five years.
Councillor Byers?
I'm also considering the fact that we as a council and also the board of are looking at how can we bring affordable housing into the gateway project. So I do know that we already are working on a more definite plan for affordable housing in our community. And I, I could see additional affordable housing coming in as a layer once that process is well underway. It seems like that would be the key thing we need to have.
Other comments? Yeah, I, I just would add that I, I see value in, in both suggestions. I think one of the things I got from the Volkart letter is that you can really affect effectively do the same thing with a year-to-year lease. I just think it's more work on the staff at, at the end of the day. Without putting an end date, it could actually you know, go, go beyond until the school was ready to accept. It could go beyond five years when you're doing a year-to-year lease. But then it's, it's the, the burden on the staff to, to try and renew it once a year. And I don't know, you know, what what that is. So I mean, I, I, I certainly was considering a year-to-year lease because it is so flexible, but for, for both parties. It's not just one party. But yeah, I don't, I don't think it's, I think it's sort of half a dozen, one sixth of the other at this point. Because we don't have the analysis, but I do hope that we don't leave this evening getting to other without chewing that up somewhere in our, in our goals. Councillor Colley?
Yeah. So if we did five years, not that this is how we would want it to go if, but what's the termination? Like, what are the reasons the lease could be terminated within that five-year window? And what's the like notification timeline and?
It's, I, that's, I, that was one thing I just looked at and it, it says, in the event Little League violates any obligation on its part to observe, to be observed under this lease agreement and fails to remedy said violation within thirty days. Written, days after written notice by the city, the city may elect to terminate the lease agreement. If the Little League fails to use the premises for a Little League baseball game for a period of ninety consecutive days from April through June of any year, the lease agreement shall be deemed abandoned and the city may terminate it. Is there any additional languages we should be aware of, Dave? That would, is that?
No.
Yeah. So that's it. It's either abandonment or I mean, I really feel like it might be good to put in language that allows them to give us notice. Because they might, you know, they might be heading towards the school before then. And, and if we have an analysis done and it shows that that's suitable land and that's where the city wants to go with it, it, the lease allows us a, a way out. Is that even necessary?
It's, it's, I, I don't think it's necessary because that's a situation where we're both agreeing. And so we can both agree to terminate the lease at any time.
And that's allowed. Yeah.
Yeah, we're both on the same page.
Councillor Byers? Oh, I'm sorry, Dave.
Just also add that the current lease doesn't lapse until, I believe, the end of this year. And this lease begins as of February first of this year. So sort of a way to look at it is they're adding five years from today instead of five years from a year from now.
I'm sorry. I didn't mean to yawn at you, Dave. That was, that was riveting. But it's, it's been a long day. Councillor?
I understood that and I, I, I still would prefer something less than twenty thirty as far as but I, I think that, that I'm in the minority there on, on, on that desire. What I do want to ask or point out maybe that there's nothing in here that says if we had a developer wanted to put in some housing, we couldn't move forward on that until the end of the lease or until we moved on to Culver. We wouldn't have any way to say, oh, you know, you need it sooner than we thought. There's nothing in this contract that would allow the city to do that. Right? Whereas if we're a shorter term, have that opportunity.
I think that was the point that Volkart was making in his letter about a year-to-year lease, just renewing it with an automatic renewal of every year with some sort of termination.
Just to follow up, if it were like a three-year lease, it wouldn't be year-to-year. So it would be less work, but there would be and this, I think, is the concern that the other councillors were expressing. There would be less stability for Little League and less security for that amount of that lifetime.
Councillor Perry Miller?
This is sort of a different point, just based off of the, the question I brought up earlier about the special events. I'm just wondering if this is adequate language. I'm just thinking about like the neighborhood and events happening there that are non Little League related. And I just wonder if, because one of the things with the special use permit is there's, it's notification to staff, it's notification to chief. It's making sure everybody knows that something's happening. We fill in a noise ordinance. So it's just like, it lets everybody know that things are happening. And I wonder if you know, that's okay that that's not in here and maybe we'll just hear about it if there's something to hear about.
And we will hear about it. The other thing, the other thing a special use permit does is it requires us, it requires the users, the person taking the application or the, applying for the permit to notify the neighbors as well. It's not just the staff, but the neighbors within a certain radius have to be notified as well. Councillor Colley?
Yeah, I totally understand the point there and I would just probably want to make sure if there was a need for the special use permit, there was some type of distinction between regular sporting events. Like if somebody can go play soccer on the field in the summer, they should not have to fill out a special use permit. They're doing it during the day and they're not interrupting neighbors. But if it's I don't know what language needs to be in there, an event over a certain number of people or?
Councillor Byers?
Just off of councillor Colley's point, since this isn't technically park, but it is neck of like it flows right into the park. Does the park ordinance apply of it needing this space needing to be clear at sunset?
I would imagine so. Like, I don't see how this waves that. Councillor, I mean, Dave, councillor Dave, different kind of councillor with an S.
I'm not sure I fully understand. This is not parkland.
Right, right. Well, I'm, I'm just thinking about the inconsistency of it seems like a part of the park, even though it's not, just because it is also open green space in which to recreate that is touching the park. And therefore the park has an ordinance where it, the park is closed at sunset. And so I wonder about special events and if a similar expectation would be held by the neighbors for those special events to be finished at sunset. And could that be another reason to have to have a special permit in order to safeguard whatever is occurring in that space that, for which there could be projected different expectations.
Councillor Pesezo?
Well, if they're, if they can only do other sporting events, it seems like they'd naturally be governed by yard. Because I don't think they have lights out there.
Unless it's like light up frisbee or something, you know?
Well, that's small, very cool people.
In that case, I'm taking up light up frisbee. I, I do want to make a clarifying point. It is, it is zoned. It is, isn't it zoned parkland? I just don't think it's, it's considered part. I mean, my recollection from the Betty Wheeler days is it just wasn't considered as a part, as, as part of Chuck Roberts Park. It was just separate for the Little League fields. But I think, isn't it the whole thing's own parks?
I, I believe that's right, but I, I can't be held to that. I'm not sure.
Um, not that it's, okay. So I, I, I'm going to try to head us towards some sort of resolution here. Councillor Penamruff?
Yeah, it's just to councillor Perry Miller's point, the concern which I share, I kind of was hoping that because whatever went on would be, have to be city approved. You know, for sports-related purposes approved by Little League and the city, that that would put that check, that that would be sufficient to put that check so that it wouldn't be anything that the neighbors would find objectionable. And I'm looking at three.
Councillor Perry Miller?
Or at least that if someone had a question, they could call the city and the city would know what to say. This is a, whatever happening. Can I follow up? Or the city maybe would just post some notices or let the folks know, you know, but the city would be able to handle that.
All right. So if there's no more discussion happening, questions or comments, I'll entertain a motion. Councillor Penamruff?
I move to approve the sorry, the lease as proposed with the yellow highlights and, and I'm going to say that last and striking and striking the last sentence from section four D. So what I'm trying for is this one. And then for D, it was the sentence, it said, any Little League property remaining on the premises after termination, blah, 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 will be deemed to have been abandoned. Second.
We have a motion in a second to adopt the lease, to approve the lease agreement, direct staff to sign the lease agreement as, as presented with yellow highlights. And striking the last sentence in for D. Striking out any Little League property remaining on the premises after such termination shall be deemed to have been abandoned. Is there any further discussion? Councillor Colley?
Yeah, wasn't there discussion of this lease going back to the Little League so they could review it? I know there's some members here tonight that received a copy with the additions, but
Yeah. So the signature would happen.
Okay.
He has the authorization to sign. That's, and then if they don't sign, then it would come back to us. Yeah. So that's a good point. Any further discussion? Roll call please.
Yes. Councillor Penamruff?
Yes.
Councillor Pesezo?
Yes.
Councillor Byers?
Yes.
And councillor Perry Miller?
Yes.
Motion carries, Mayor.
Thank you, Hector. Thank you, everybody. You don't have to stay for the rest of the night. We'll let you, we'll give you a second if you want to go. Yeah.
Thank you.
All right. I'll tell you, I, I appreciate your comments about the lease time. And I agreed with you up until I heard two million dollars and we have to raise the money ourselves. Councillor Perry Miller?
Is it? Is it okay that we don't talk about the resolution? Is the resolution not a requirement for this lease? It was an optional thing. Okay. Because I mean, I'm happy to not do the resolution.
But with that said, if we get an analysis that says this is prime workforce housing spot, we could always do a resolution at another time to memorialize that thing and to memorialize that intention. Because I really appreciated that that was the point of the resolution. And I mean, you said it in your staff report and I thought that was really valid. So I, I would hope we'd put a pin in that. Councillor Colley?
Just a piece of information to share, assuming I'm reading it correctly and reading the correct map that landed zone industrial as well as Chuck Roberts Park. So whatever.
It's all light industrial?
That's what it says.
Wow.
So whatever study came out of there, we'd have to.
That's interesting. Light industrial parks.
I have, I've heard them all.
Oh, and in terms of like, it would include zoning for housing is what you're saying or a change in zoning. Fortunately, I think we have a surplus of light industrial.
If I may, accept your charge and myself, the place to do that would be to include that analysis in the city's goals. I'm not sure that it belongs in the two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six column, but I'll be sure that that's, it's in that document for a few, for a future year.
So it'll be on the document when that comes to us for adoption. Thank you. Councillor Perry Miller?
Sorry, I know you keep trying to move us on. I should, feel like I should have asked this earlier, but are there Little League fields in Phoenix? Is it just talent?
It's just talent.
And they have four fields with Chuck Roberts and they would be moving to three.
Yeah, they'd be moving to three.
And there's a shortage of sports fields and all that.
Except in, in Medford. So in, in Southgate, Medford, they don't utilize their fields full-time. And in fact, they've offered them to this, to this Little League. That might have changed in the last couple of years, but, but yeah, they, they have a lot of availability on their fields. Councillor Byers? Oh, wow. So they're charging their own league? Is that Little League is charging, is that from Little League or is it from Medford Parks?
Did she say that she were, they were the only Little League who pays to use fields? Did I mishear her?
I think she said paying like maintenance and upkeep maybe.
Yeah, fifteen thousand dollars a year in upkeep.
Yes, I heard that number.
Maybe the other facilities, they pay a rental fee, but the parks department maintains the nurse. I don't know.
I'd be good to know.
I am, I'm, man, I, I would, my money was on that those fields were owned by Little League, but I could be wrong. All right. Well, if you find that, let us know.
We give them a lot of credit for all the volunteering that you do between coaching and, and money and all that stuff.
Yeah, they they've got a good history here and, and those fields. Those fields were donated many, many, many years ago for the purpose of.
Yeah, I just have one more sort of tangent thing. I just want to say is that, you know, after we did the, what was it? Title seventeen updates, you know, the change a bunch of zoning. And the one thing we really haven't done that was talked about, but it seemed to always fall off, but even thinking about it radar is to actually look at where our zoning districts actually are and if there's any And if there's any adjustment needed to be done, and this just was another case of it's zone industrial. And to me, that's part of when we look at where, because we also talked about where our locations where affordable housing would be primed and see what we could do about making those places more attractive. But as far as I know, we haven't even done that first step. So I'm just speaking out that these are things that I think need to be on when this is the thing to do.
All right. So item make point two is appointment of committee and commission liaisons. And you guys all have a staff report and just, I didn't communicate well enough to the city manager that only some of these liaison, uh, assignments are, are for, subject to appointment. Uh, most of them are voluntary and are really just a liaison assignment. Um, and you know, our history has been that we, we sort of everybody sort of tells me what they want to do and, and, uh, and that's kind of usually where it all lands. Oftentimes not every committee or commission gets filled. I just wanted to make that clear. But what is subject to an appointment? So the distinction is that the liaison positions to like traffic and safety and talent urban forestry liaisons don't deliberate, they don't vote, they don't make decisions. So they're not an advisory to one way or the other. Thank you, Chief. But there are some positions that are, and they are ex officios. Um, do have the ability to deliberate. They are not voting members, but they can deliberate. Um, and Rogue Valley Metropolitan Planning Organization, Rogue Valley Council of Governments and Rogue Valley Area Commission on Transportation. Those are all positions that are, are to their board. So, um, they can act on behalf of the city. So I'm, uh, I'm just for the record, I'll, I'll mention that Parks and Recreation Commission will be, uh, the liaison will be Counselor Byers. Traffic and Safety Commission, it will be Counselor Colay. Talent Urban Forestry will be Counselor Colay. Talent Public Arts Committee will be Counselor Perry Miller. And Together for Talent will be Counselor Medina. Um, additionally, um, Counselor Byers will be working with the advisory group to the contractors and, and you'll clarify some of those things in your upcoming report. Um, but I will ask, I'm seeking council approval for the ex officios. And this got cut off because it's, it's, uh, mayor. Mayor, which, yeah, there, you've got the other piece. Do I have the other piece?
Is it on the back?
Is it on the back?
No.
No, no. Um, it's okay. I, I remember him because, um, it hasn't been that long of a day. Planning, uh, ex officio are mayor and Counselor Pesezo. And, um, and then the Rogue Valley Metropolitan Planning Organization is Counselor Penomarif, of which you are.
Uh, now I'm the chair.
The chair.
Vice chair for two years.
Bravo, bravo. And then the Rogue Valley Council of Governments is, uh, mayor with the alternate being Counselor Penomarif. And then, um, Rogue Valley Area Commission on Transportation is Counselor Penomarif. I'll entertain a motion for those appointments. Counselor Byers?
To fund the mayor's appointment of council liaisons as discussed in today's meeting.
There's a motion and a second, uh, to make those appointments as discussed in today's meeting. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say, uh, roll call please.
Counsel Colay?
Yes.
Counselor Penemirov?
Yes.
Counselor Pesezo?
Yes.
Counselor Byers?
Yes.
Counselor Perry Miller?
Yes.
Motion carries, Mayor.
Thank you. Item eight point three is skate park. Uh, committee update. Counsel Byers?
Uh, yeah, so thank you guys. The skate park advisory committee is just to really reiterate for everyone. Um, is a non, it's an advisory committee to the contractor grid line that will be enacting both the restoration project in the actual skate park proper and adding a couple new elements to Old Town Park as part of the, um, grant, uh, proposal outline that is funding the majority of this project. The contractor in both their proposal and the response to the city's RFP and in the contract that they signed with the city requested, um, citizen input. And so rather than having, um, just a, hopefully a good collection of insight to be found on a random visit to the park. We wanted to pull together a collection of citizens who could speak knowledgeably about this, especially about the history of the project. The grassroots movement of it, the importance to the community, um, all of that, even though it will be uh, minimal input that the contractor will be seeking for that part of the project. I'm going to be leaving, uh, a liaison from that committee to the council. Um, it's not an official advisory committee to the council or to city staff. But we do connect him with the contractor to set up some good
Um, Counsel Byers, can I make one clarifying point?
Sure.
Um, it's, it was in the contract and the response that they were looking for stakeholder input.
Yes.
Yeah, okay, that's okay.
Um, they, I've also requested this is relevant because it lifts some input, um, asks potentially off this advisory committee. I've asked for input about other components to Old Town Park that may be added that are not part of the actual skate park. I've asked for that, those questions for input to be addressed to the Parks Commission instead because it was a park. Uh, uh, that is, um, going to be added to. Um, it's going to be exciting to, uh, get this project underway, involve community members, make sure that the history is, um, connected to this project and, uh, then to hopefully work with this advisory group to go a little further into capturing again, the history of the creation of this park and the grassroots improvement behind it and hopefully to memorialize that, um, history through some sort of narrative or just if or otherwise. And I think it'd be just amazing if it could also be highlighted in some sort of grand
Great. All of my initial conversations with the stakeholders, uh, they have all expressed excitement about those additional celebrations and, and, uh, other ideas and um, so did you have a list of those folks? So there's, uh, every applicant was contacted, every applicant wants to do it.
So sorry.
That's okay. Yeah. We'll just, uh, we'll just mention who they are at the next meeting, just but again, it's not an official appointment, so.
Got a quick question.
Counselor Colay?
What's the timeline on the start date of that project?
I don't have, I don't know a firm start date. I know they are planning on knocking it out this summer for sure.
Have you contacted them yet? Any of them? This, no, the stakeholders?
I've begun to.
Yeah, um, because they, it, when I, when I discussed them and handed them off to Counselor Byers, um, I made them aware that the project wasn't quite ready yet and it would be a little bit of a wait for them. So they're all, they're all standing by. They know, know what's going on. Any other questions or comments? Great. Exciting. Thank you, Counsel Byers and this, uh, should be really exciting. Um, next item on the agenda is nine point one, former city manager recommendation on permanent city manager process. Steph?
Um, Mayor, I'm not the former city manager, but I've been asked to stand in for him, uh, in this instance. On, at the February fifth meeting, the council appointed Alex Campbell to be the manager, city manager pro temp for a period of six months. Um, and at the time asked that, uh, Gary Elman, the then city manager proposed a process for where we go from here. And that's what this memo is. This is not a decision that the council needs to make now. This is just a proposal from Gary to submit input from me. Um, uh, as a possible path, but, um, and the pathway that he proposes is that um, um, at about the four month timeframe, four month into the, into, to Alex's tenure, the council then decide, um, whether to, uh, proceed with a full bore recruitment or, uh, decide that they're satisfied enough with Alex's, uh, performance that, uh, they don't need to go through a full bore recruitment and just, uh, go through the process of appointing him then. Um, and he suggested, um, um, a salary. Again, we know we have to approve or disapprove the salary suggestion tonight. That'll be for some, for you to consider, um, um, some type of way. Um, but the four months is kind of important because if you decide you really want to go through a full bore recruitment or even a half bore recruitment, um, then you, uh, will need to get started because recruitment can take a while. Um, and as noted, it can, as Gary noted, it can take eight days easily, you know, somewhat costly depending on how extensive it is. This is just kind of laying out the options for you, these two pathways. Decide to go for a recruitment and, and you get to the four month period or decide you don't need to go through. If that's it.
I have a couple questions. Um, I just remember this a little bit differently. And what I thought, we, what I thought I asked for was, um, a recommendation on the timeframe that we should allow for, um, you know, a timeframe that we should structure for the pro temp position. And then when I asked for that, he, he, he added, and I, my memory might be wrong, thankfully there's records of this stuff, but, uh, added, do you want a salary study with that? And, uh, my answer was yes. Um, and um, so my, my question is, it sounds to me with the way this recommendation, it sounded to me, if I heard you right, that, um, we're limited to six months and I didn't understand it that way. So if, the reason I'm asking is that if we wanted to not get engaged right away, there was some big project that we needed to kind of get through to the other side. We wouldn't necessarily have to get started at four months, right? We could get started at six months, knowing that it would go a little bit longer. Like, does this recommendation limit that?
No, this recommend, uh, this recommendation doesn't limit you at all. It's just kind of a reminder that if you're thinking of the six months of the, um, the term that is in the current, in the current contract being six months, you better start thinking about what you're going to do at the four month period. You can always, uh, provide, provided that both parties agree. You can always extend that, um, that pro temp, um, uh, position longer, uh, but both parties have to agree.
Right, got it. Okay. And, uh, what I did appreciate about it is that he offered his he offered us plenty of options with his, with his long experience, as did you. So, um, it not in any way complaining about what he produced for us. I think that's great. Um, I would ask the council to consider, because there isn't any decision to make, that at some point in time between now and then, uh, that we also get a recommendation from our HR, um, RV cog and that it's just the usual uh, the usual executive team that would do that and then bring that, bring those recommendations as part of this ongoing discussion when, when we decide to get to it. Is there? Is everybody, yeah. And so at that point in time, we have all the options of, on the table. And again, thank you, Dave. Um, this, this is a, a good broad way to look at it and really appreciate both you and Gary putting this together. All right. Um, also, it's good for the public to know that there's all these different options too. I appreciate the transparency and I, I know we all do. Um, all right. The next item on the agenda is item nine point two, which is the serve pro invoice. Staff?
Thank you very much, Mayor, uh, members of the council. Serve pro, um, responded after the fire at the historic town hall and did a lot of remediation work, uh, immediately after the, after the fire. Uh, the city has filed a claim with, uh, CIS, our insurance carrier, um, which just now got paid. Um, serve pro has been waiting anxiously for payment of the services rendered. Um, and, uh, we wanted to expedite that and make that, uh, make that payment um, as quickly as we could. So that's why we asked for, uh, the addition to the agenda tonight.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion. Counselor Byers?
I'm going to approve the payment of sixty-eight thousand four hundred twenty-one, twenty-one dollars and fifty-one cents to serve pro.
Second, we have a motion and a second to, uh, approve the payment of sixty thousand four hundred twenty-one dollars and fifty-one cents to serve pro. Any discussion? Roll call please.
Counselor Colay?
Yes.
Counselor Penemirov?
Yes.
Counselor Pesezo?
Yes.
Counselor Byers?
Yeah.
Counselor Perry Miller?
Yes.
Motion carries, Mayor.
Thank you. Item ten point one is the review of the look ahead. Staff?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I understand you, uh, practice was the C U quarter provides the look ahead.
Oh, apologies, Mayor. Uh, so really, um, we're looking to discuss the, uh, upcoming meetings, um, for the uh, March nineteenth meeting, um, according to my notes, I only have two items on there. Uh, one would be the review of the city audit and, uh, uh, potentially something from community development, um, either the mass timber or the railroad. Uh, my memory serves me faulty, but it is one of the two.
Thank you, Hector. And I, I think we can all understand that the transition happening, um, I, I, if if nobody objects, we can wait till the next meeting for the look ahead. We don't need to do this tonight. And if, if you want to add to it, but I just want to say, we appreciate, we appreciate that there's a transition going on and, and we'll get back, uh, we'll get back to our continuity soon enough. Thank you, Hector.
Yeah, I, I, a couple of things that, uh, we are discussing at the staff level and, uh, would welcome your input on. Um, the, uh, a tour meeting on the, uh, at the nineteenth um, would include, I believe, uh, I need to be, a, a, a budget officer needs to be appointed. And there's also the tour audit to, um, acknowledge. And, um, uh, we also, I think Matt Brinkley would be ready to do his next, uh, discussion with the, uh, tour board to be closing out the discussion on the sustainability priorities. And then also we talked, uh, Matt and I talked a bit this week about doing a bit of a presentation about the economics, the value of the land and sort of how much and what, uh, the council, the tour board, uh, um, may want to prioritize. Um, uh, what you can, what, make sure that, uh, you all understand sort of what your, what your budget is in terms of what your, uh, could directly incentivize with the value of the land. Sorry, that was a long way to.
Yeah, but all of it necessary. Yeah.
Um, and, uh, and also, also I expect that, um, the Urban Forest Free Committee will be presenting a, or staff, I'm not sure the protocol, uh, whether the Urban Forest Free Committee themselves would present uh, a plan for Arbor Day or staff would represent, um, the Urban Forest Free Committee's, uh, recommendation and request to council for how to memorialize and recognize Arbor Day.
I think they'll bring us. I think they'll bring us a committee member forward to present on that.
So they would go on present, presentation, on a special presentation? Okay. I mean, the protocol is, uh, Alex, if the stuff gets requested through your office and at the end of the day, you have you have oversight of the agenda.
Thank you.
Just since it came up.
Appreciate it.
I'm sure you already know that.
No, please do not assume. Thank you very much. No, I appreciate all the pointers.
Uh, all right, let's see. I think that's everything. Uh, okay, written comments, number eleven, there are none. So with that, we will adjourn the meeting at seven seventeen AM. No, no, that's what my computer says. It's nine, it's nine. No, my, my computer is the only one that says seventeen, seven, seven seventeen AM.
The time is nine oh one.
Oh.